All right, as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes, sir.
Butch Morris?
Yes.
Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Be Knight?
Yes.
And Mary Stone?
Yes.
Town staff likewise, when I call your name, please respond. Martha Taylor?
Yes.
And anticipated speakers and presented on the presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. TJ Melvin, Millennium Engineering?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, good evening. This is the August 3rd, 2022 Open Meeting of the Newbury Planning Board. And it's being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020 Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, general law chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2023. This order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056, or by calling 1-929-2056099, US, New York, and enter the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org. And the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may call upon, may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Be told until your name is called. Further, for all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with your mute button or by, or your phone star six to toggle mute/unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me. Do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comments, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek, seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. Video conference participants, to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray band, the gray hand, excuse me, that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant and participant, or his or her representative, the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again, afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, please note that each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll call. So that concludes our introduction and we can move on to the agenda. I believe the only substantive matter is an informal discussion of a proposed subdivision plan for lot seven and seventeen Marsh Avenue. And Mr. Melvin, are you ready to go?
Sorry, what's informal mean?
Well, actually, Mary, thank you for the question and I just want to confirm that, and TJ Melvin, this question is really for you. I just want to confirm that this is not a formal submission of a preliminary plan. This is simply an informational meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, if, or a formal presentation, it would require some additional, so, some additional proceedings. So, Mary, they, basically, they just want to come and talk to us and see what we think about what they're thinking. If that's a fair way to put it.
Okay.
Martha, is there anything you want to add before we get into this?
No, I think, I think that's it. TJ will kind of walk us through the plan. They're looking for some feedback from the board tonight and some waiver requests that they have and get a sense of, from the board of, of kind of the overall. And I think TJ will probably be more, more explicit in terms of what they're looking for.
Okay. Oh. I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, but I understand the plan we're going to see tonight is somewhat different from the one that was circulated earlier to the members. Is that correct?
TJ, you're muted.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if that was directed at me or you. Yeah, so I, I'd kind of just colored up a plan. Martha had asked some questions regarding the defining the lot line. So I, nothing changed. I just added some color to kind of make those three lots stand out a little bit better.
Okay, fine. Why don't you go ahead then?
All right. So, good evening. My name's TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering here on behalf of the applicant Peter LaRiviere. If I could share my screen, I can pull up our concept plan.
You should be set to do that.
Perfect. So initially, we were, you know, calling it a three lot subdivision. In some talks with Martha, you know, this is really the entire plan for the project. We do propose these two lots to have access off Marsh Ave, which is kind of why we were originally intending as a three lot. But at this point, we may just include it all as one filing instead of stepping it out and doing A and Rs and then coming back with the subdivision. So the proposal for this would be to install a 500-foot-long cul-de-sac. One of the waivers that we are requesting is to narrow the roadway width down to 22 feet. We're also asking to be able to use gravel as a wearing surface rather than pavement. We have also asked for a reduction to the cul-de-sac radius for, for the, for the roadway surface. The dead-end length and right-of-way width and cul-de-sac right-of-way line all meet the bylaws. We do have a couple additional waivers. We're asking for a waiver to granite curbing, which I know, in talking with Martha, it's kind of up in the air. We really need a waiver for that, whereas LID is preferred, which is why we were asking for the waiver. The, the other one, I know Martha, we had kind of talked about briefly, the side slopes at two to one. So really, all we're asking for that for is to be able to tighten up the swales just a little bit closer to the roadway instead of going out three to one, going, you know, just two to one flat for the, for the swell and the back up two to one. We don't intend to just cut a big slope out of this and, and have it real steep dropping off the side of the road. So I can kind of zoom in a little bit more here. So this lot right here is Mr. LaRiviere's existing lot, his existing house. Currently, his lot line follows my mouth here and then out towards the Parker River. So as part of this project, we would be kind of taking off this portion of his lot. Initially, we were intending to just leave this portion of his lot intact. I've also been in contact with Martha. There's some question regarding the frontage that we're proposing to use for his lot. You know, when we do come back in with a formal submission, we'll have that fully vetted out and have an answer as to whether, who owns the right-of-way and kind of have a better defined approach at that point for his lot. So then coming into the cul-de-sac, we're proposing three additional lots. One would be here, second here, and the third here. I, I know the board looks at it as a, you know, the, the three lots as I've shown. At this point, Mr. LaRiviere does not intend to build this. But in our discussion, it's better to show the board upfront of, you know, creating this as a lot. That way you know it's there and it's not anything hidden when, you know, we're asking for waivers. It's just not really something he intends to build, but at this point, we're showing it as a separate lot. This lot in the middle will actually be for Mr. LaRiviere's daughter and then we have the third lot here. As far, as far as stormwater, as eventually we'd be putting roadside swales, likely running off some drainage into this area here, just kind of the lower point. This is a little bit of a high point coming through the site. And likewise, we'd have to get something else probably either back in this portion or this portion of the site to handle the roadway drainage. So I can zoom in on the waivers and just kind of go through each of them. So we are asking for a waiver to the environmental analysis. I know I do still have it called out as three lots and in talking with Martha, that we could change that to the five, including the two A and R lots into this project. So as I mentioned, we, the cul-de-sac, we're asking to be a 95-foot diameter rather than the 140 feet required. The pavement-wearing surface, again, we're asking for gravel. The sidewalks and bikeways, we're asking to not, not install any of them. The fire protection, again, also in kind of our preliminary talks with Martha, the, the fire department has been preferring sprinklers rather than the cisterns at this point. I mentioned the granite curbing waiver and the side slopes at two to one to get the roadside swales in. Mr. LaRiviere, you know, intends on just leaving his house as is. He's going to maintain living here. We've actually just submitted a new septic system designed to, to move his septic from this portion of the lot up to here. So that's kind of the brief overview. I can show you the second sheet that was mentioned in the beginning, just kind of clarifying the lot lines. Overlaps a little bit, but this would be the proposed, the blue would be the proposed lot line following here up and around for 17 Marsh Ave. This would be the boundary of Lot Two and then this would be the boundary of Lot One. So really, we're just looking for, you know, some initial feedback from the board. A lot of the waivers that we have listed are actually the same ones that we had requested on the Green Street subdivision for Fred Jackman. Kind of just followed the same design as it was something that the board had previously approved. But I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have and we'd appreciate any feedback you can provide us.
Is it your anticipation that the road would be accepted as a public way?
That was one thing we were thinking about. I, my guess is that the town would not want to accept the gravel road, so it may have to remain private. I don't believe the Green Street one was, was a public way. Martha, do you have?
It, it's remaining a private way.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I had anticipated if we go the gravel route.
Well, not only that, but we, we are reducing the, the, you know, the turnaround and all of that. It's been my experience with this board that where there's a reduction in dimensional requirements for the roadway that we tend to want to see it kept as a private way. I don't suppose you run this by the fire department at this point to see if they're happy with the turnaround?
We haven't, no, not at this point. We haven't. Again, we just kind of mimic the one that was previously approved, but we can reach out to them and get some initial feedback from them as well.
Yeah.
What I, what I'd like to suggest, if I may, is that you go through me and we can set up a meeting with the fire department to, to talk about that waiver.
Okay.
So I, I'm a little bit confused. The unnamed lot on the southerly end, the one to the right of Lot One. What, yeah, right there, is, is that, who owns that right now?
So currently, Mr. LaRiviere owns, owns both of these lots. His existing lot follows this stone wall here. So it, it does get a little confusing with the wall and the existing property line. But as part of this proposal, this unnamed lot would actually be part of 17 Marsh Ave.
Okay, yeah, because I was going to say, I assume that that lot is a grandfathered for insufficient frontage, so you need to deal with that some fashion. Let me turn to the board members and see if there are any questions. Pete, anything?
TJ, thanks for the presentation. So Martha, that, that's all well-watered on there. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so all the houses would be sprinkled as opposed to having a fire hydrant on that site, right? No cistern. As we've done.
Right, and the fire department has said our, our rules and regs call for the, the cisterns, but our fire department has been very clear that they don't want the cisterns. They do want the houses to be sprinkled.
Yeah, cool. Let's see what they say about the radius, TJ, and, you know, let's, let's continue the discussion. But thank you for the initial presentation.
Is that it, babe?
Yep.
George, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Leslie?
No, I have none. Thank you.
Woody?
No, I don't have any questions other than be mindful of what the fire department has to say, I guess. Any screenage to about us on the, on the left-hand side of the cul-de-sac there. But other than that, no, no questions.
Thank you. Woody and Mary, anything you want to add or have questions to ask?
Oh, it's just a, it may not be pertinent, but what does it mean to have the house sprinkled? You have sprinkler systems in every, in every room?
TJ, do you want to answer that or?
Yep. So a lot of the times when houses aren't served by town or city water, there's actually like a holding tank. A lot of the times, they'll put them either in the attic or there'll be some sort of pump system. And, yeah, throughout the house, there'll be, you know, a fire protection engineer will design, the sprinkler design, in order to mitigate any fires as best they can.
Anything else, Mary?
No, also, thank you, Larry.
Martha, do we have any members of the public who might have any questions?
Mr. LaRiviere has his hand raised.
Okay, great.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for taking this informal review. My name is Peter LaRiviere. I currently reside at 17 Marsh Ave. Just a little back color, I guess, on this is that I had originally bought the property here, which consisted more or less about six acres four years ago. And then Arthur Blood, who was adjacent to the property, had passed away and then I acquired the, about seven acres, more or less, and that was adjacent to my property. My intent at the time, and still remains my intent, was to prevent overdevelopment of this area. Obviously, I planned to live here. I was going to subdivide, partially subdivide my lot for my daughter, who would be right next door to me. And then in order to defray some of the cost, I was, wanted to develop a couple of lots. One of the lots that TJ showed was Lot Four. There was, there's an existing house on that lot. That was where Arthur Blood had lived in the Blood family prior to that. So that house is still a structure, still, still is there. There's a driveway that, almost where the access road, there's an access driveway that goes up all the way to the Blood property currently. I don't know if you are familiar with the area, but there was a big barn on the property that was a, a safety hazard that I had removed. There was actually a couple of structures there that I had removed in order to mitigate any safety hazards that existed on the property. Also, this property was, for lack of a better term, a junkyard. It was, uh, it was over 10 cars that were on the property. There was multiple, I mean, I spent, probably took about 33 dumpsters off of the property of literally junk. Debbie is very familiar with the property and this property was going to be condemned years ago and mitigated all of those concerns as a result of the cleanup that I've done. One of the things that I just want to mention is, it's really, it's not a concern to me. Fred Thurlow is a great neighbor. He and I get along very well. It's just that the, the access road there to my driveway, where it shows the existing right-of-way, my understanding and paperwork that I've gotten from the town is that that was a variance that was awarded to Fred back in 2005 such that he would be able to subdivide his property with the current country club and, and the two homes that he has on it. I don't have any issue with the variance. The only thing that I would like some clarity on from the town is, now that I own that frontage, does the variance supersede me utilizing that frontage for what I'm trying to do here? So that to me is something that, you know, it obviously comes into play here in terms of what TJ had reviewed with you. And then one last point I would like to make. TJ did mention Lot Two. With my desire not to have this overdeveloped, which was one of the main reasons why I purchased the land, I didn't want to contract getting it and putting in six houses in this neighborhood because I wanted to try to keep it as rural as possible. That Lot Two, as it goes all the way down to Marsh Ave, adjacent to my driveway, my intention would be to incorporate that into my current property and not have that as, at this point in time, as a separate lot. So then, you know, the only lots I would be looking to market, so to speak, is Lot One, Five, and Four. Those would be the three, along with my daughter utilizing some of my property at the end of the cul-de-sac to, to build her home. And as TJ said, there's currently a leaching field right where the hand is. I plan to move that leaching field back behind my house, behind the barn I have in my house. So that, that's, that's the overall intent. So just, just wanted to add a little more color to why I bought the property and what my intentions are moving forward. So I'm not looking to overdevelop this land at all. I plan to live here for the rest of my life and my daughter and her husband as well.
Thank you. You know, as far as any issues of access on Marsh Ave, from Marsh Ave, I don't know that we're, this board is in a position to, you know, to really give you any guidance on that right now. You might want to talk to the building commissioner. But it occurs to me, if, if in fact you're keeping Lot Two as part of your lot, then that, that would resolve any, any frontage or access issues, I would think, because you would have access up the, off the new road. I'm just thinking out loud here. Martha, is there anything you would want to add to this?
I think the only other thing is that the property actually does have two separate zoning districts in it, which I've mentioned, TJ, as well. The, the portion closer to the river is in the Parker River Marine District and that line actually goes through Mr. LaRiviere's house. And then the front portion of it closes to Marsh Ave is, is in the agricultural residential district and also the right portion of Lot A. So there are, they both allow single-family and two-family dwellings. But the, the lot area is the same, but the frontage and setbacks are different. So just, again, I've mentioned that to TJ, but that's something that to be mindful of as well.
And I would, this is Peter, I'm sorry to raise my hand, but Peter LaRiviere, the, my question there would be, is there any reason why that wouldn't be waived as a result of this being purely residential now? There's really no reason why that, in my mind, would be considered an industrial-type property, but that would be a question I would have for the board. Because what that does primarily, that to your point, Martha, that would, um, right now in the industrial zone, it requires 200 feet of frontage, which is, you know, accommodated for in this plan, but if it was not the Parker Marine District, it would be the 125 feet that any other residential property would require. So just wanted to open that question up as well. Is that a consideration in order to waive that industrial Parker Marine District requirement?
I'm not really sure about that, Larry. Do you have any thoughts?
I'm not, yeah, I mean, this was just an informal discussion, so, you know, we're certainly keep an open mind, but it, it strikes me more of an issue of a variance to the ZVA than, than anything that we can simply waive, you know?
That's what I would think as well. I mean, the, the other thing that this would take the town meeting vote would be to actually change, you know, change the boundaries of that district. Because the industrial use of the, the marine use that was, was on the board's property a long time ago, obviously is not there anymore. And it's one of the few districts that we have that does not follow property lines. We changed most of them back in 2011, 2012. But, you know, barring, barring that, I think probably it would be a variance as opposed to the board having the authority to waive those, but I can, I can run that question by town council.
And, and the reason, the primary reason I ask is just to, if you look at Lot Five, TJ put that up. Lot Five, that lot is smaller than what I originally intended it to be able to accommodate that 200 feet. So you can see how it's not a clean, you know, straight line, whatever. I'd like to make that lot a little larger, Lot Five. And then Lot Four, slightly smaller, just, you know, but the only reason it's, the sizes that they are is that it requires the 200 feet of front. So just, just to give you some color on what my rationale is to request them.
Hey, Larry, another question if I could?
Please.
Hey TJ, could you, I dropped the screen for a sec? So Pete, I, one Pete to another Pete, since we're having this informal discussion, you know, I'm, I'm the guy who's always trying to figure out a way of how we can somehow bring some form of housing into our community, which is affordable. Because everything that is constructed kind of goes against that and we have limitations with our infrastructure to allow for any sort of means to address that. So I'm always trying to think outside the box and since we're having an informal discussion, it's a great time to think outside the box. So the things that I'm thinking about are like, you know, a two-family, done tastefully. You know, that would, that would be fitting with, with the, with the design of what comes down the road for you. You know, I, I think we're looking for, for those sorts of opportunities in our housing catalog to be developed. And I didn't know if that was something that you would give consideration to.
Is that, that's a great question. At this time, my intention is not to develop the lots. I have actually neighbors all around me that have sons and daughters that are interested in buying these parcels of land. I don't have a shortage of demand for sure. And my intention is to, next door to me, the Swishers, his son would like to purchase Lot One. So he's really a kind of a buyer in waiting. And then I have another neighbor across the street that has a nephew that's interested in another lot, but they're all single-family intent. And then you have my daughter, who would be in this neighborhood as well. So, so short answer is, haven't thought about it, but, um, my intention is to sell the land and then maybe with some constraints and, you know, in the purchase and sales in terms of what can be built there, but other than that, I don't have any intentions for a multiple family at this point in time.
So what I just heard is the intent is just to sell the land and have other people build what they'd like on the property.
Correct, correct.
You know, and the, the other thing is, you know, we have this great accessory. You know, and the, the other thing is, you know, we have this great accessory apartment by law, you know, that allows for, uh, you know, a, a secondary dwelling, whether attached or, or secondary, you know, and that, uh, that helps families with, you know, uh, maybe, you know, parents that are aging, uh, that would like to stay located or young families that want to get started. So anything outside the box is, uh, very appealing.
Sure, sure. We'll think of that. My son-in-law is sitting here, so he's living with us now, waiting to build his house. I think he wants to get a little further away from me than that, but.
Great. Thanks so much, Pete.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Well, I hope we, we've given you some help in this. Uh, I, it seems to me that, um, while you certainly want to work closely with Martha, and, uh, I, I think touching bases with the building commissioner and the fire department might be the next logical steps. Um, it, it, it looks like it, it presents some challenges, um, uh, from a, you know, purely, uh, you know, from a legal and access point of view, but, you know, I, I'm sure there's, uh, there's some workarounds. Would be my gut reaction anyway. So anything else anyone wants to add?
Um, I have a question.
Larry?
Yes, Mary?
Uh, I don't know whether I should direct this to you or to Martha, but the town of Newbury, I must have, uh, very specific guidelines about removing, um, you know, waste materials like junk cars and anything that was oil-based. Um, I know it's overseen by the state, but what role does Newbury play in that cleanup?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a stab at that. I don't think it's anything that this board would have jurisdiction over.
I'm sorry?
I don't think it's anything that, that, that we would have any jurisdiction over.
Okay.
Um, Martha, you want to add anything to that?
Uh, no, not really. I mean, it sounds like the materials have been all removed already. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And, and I, I, I was, I did have a permit issued for the, um, destruction of the barn and the removal of, and the property. And Peter, I walked the property with Peter a couple of times, um, and, um, you know, so at, at that point, he had issued be a, a destruct, you know, permit for destruction of the barn and removal of the material. Um, it was a safety hazard. It was leaning and actually, uh, only thing holding it up was a, a tree and leaning towards the house next door. So, um, I did that fairly quickly after I had purchased the land. But everything was on the up and up. I had Peter here walk the land. He, I applied for the permit and permit was issued. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
All, all cars and anything that secreted any oil were all properly removed as well too. So there's nothing on the property, uh, like that anymore.
Okay, that would, that would be similar to, um, some of you weren't on the board when, um, Bill DiFrancesco originally permitted the, uh, Newbury self-storage project, but the person who had lived there before was a tremendous hoarder, and he took away dumpster after dumpster after dumpster, tires and other, other materials. And, um, you know, I think he was, that was all per- permitted, but there was no role that the town played.
Okay.
You know, unless there was some, you know, some indication that hazardous material had actually went into the, into the ground, which.
Right. Well, gasoline and oil from cars, so isn't, doesn't that have to be cleaned up specifically? In a certain way to be sure that it doesn't poison the park or whatever, whatever.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a D E P issue, Mary.
Okay.
I don't know what, I don't know if Debbie plays any role in that, but Debbie has been on the property multiple times before and after the cleanup and, and there, there was really, there was, there was, these cars were dry. I mean, these are, these were old, rusted out. Um, I'm talking nineteen forties, nineteen fifties, sixties. Um, they've been there for tens and tons of years. Um, so I, um, yeah, so I, I didn't see any evidence of any oil or gas or anything of that sort. Um.
Well, I guess the planning board isn't involved in that kind of thing anyway, but I was, I appreciate the concern. Thank you.
I mean, that, that certainly, well, getting way ahead of the game, that, you know, some of those questions maybe, um, uh, can also be addressed further on down the road. I think we're just at a very preliminary stage and frankly, I, and I, I am getting way, way ahead, but I look forward to a sidewalk down there. I think it'd be very interesting.
Yeah.
But, um, but that, that's, that's down the road a bit. Pete, you look like you have something to say, no?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
So, so we, we are having a sidewalk. Is that right, Martha?
Oh, at some point.
Yeah, I think typically, um, our practice is to do the sidewalk after the application has been.
Okay, that's correct. I, myself, um.
TJ or Mr. LaRiviere, do you have any sense of, uh, when you might actually be looking to submit the subdivision plan?
Um, I think, you know, once we kind of just flush everything out with fire, um, in the building inspector and kind of just resolve any issues regarding the frontage, we're, we're looking to get this in as quickly as we can. Um, just kind of wanted to make sure the board was, um, you know, not opposed to the waivers that we were asking for and, um, and just kind of finalize the design and get it back in front of you guys as quickly as we can.
Okay, so, uh, TJ, if you want to contact me, um, I'll set something up with the fire department to, uh, take a look at the, the cul-de-sac and the roadway.
Okay, yeah, awesome. I'll email you first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all for your help.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks. Okay, um, so we have, I'm just turning back to the agenda. We have no old business. Uh, I will read the, um, July financial report. Uh, payroll warrants, which are, uh, payroll and invoices authorized, payroll warrants to the planning director, PR twenty-three dash oh-two for pay period ending seven sixteen twenty-two, and PR, uh, dash oh-three for the pay period ending seven thirty twenty-two. Planning board expense invoices for Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad, seven nineteen twenty-two was paid in escrow accounts to Joseph Sawatka Construction Inspections, one oh-five by road, uh, seven five twenty-two, and also to Joe Sawatka Construction Inspection to fifteen Coleman Road also paid seven five twenty-two. And that is our July financial report. Um. So liaison reports, Leslie, anything from the select board?
Yeah, the select board. There was, uh, somebody brought up a motion, um, select board, uh, member Jerry Hevy brought up a motion to end any anonymous donations. Um, there was quite a long discussion on the donation of three thousand dollars for the police department. So that's being taken under consideration. Um, the conservation committee and election workers, all the vacancies have been filled. Um, the Voters Act states that a constable has to be within a hundred and fifty feet of each voting area during the voting process. Town administrators report there was a seventy thousand dollar grant from the fishing game for the Larkin Road Dam and a hundred and sixty thousand plus for, um, signage, uh, road signage, sidewalks, road repairs, um, hundred thousand dollars for, um, Central Street Bridge to replace the arch. And I believe that's about it.
Very good. Thank you, Leslie. Uh, for the ZBA, I really don't have much to report. Their last meeting, they only had one item on the agenda, which was just, uh, a review of a, uh, final review of a, a decision that had previously been voted, uh, or I should say acted on. I guess they formally adopted it at the last meeting, but that was for Tenth Street, uh, project I had previously reported on. And their next meet, regular meeting is the nineteenth. I haven't seen an agenda, but I should be able to report on that on our meeting of the eighteenth. So that's really all I have for the ZBA. Um, Conservation Commission.
Yes, uh, thanks very much. Um, so, uh, we had a meeting on the nineteenth, and we also had a meeting last night. Last night was reorganization. I don't have my notes in front of me from the nineteenth, but I think the major component of the nineteenth con- conversation, uh, was the Borrego Project. Uh, and so there's some things that, uh, are being worked through on that project because of the, of the access road that needs to be constructed for the tie-in to occur. Um.
I think that's. One off of Main Street, Pete?
That's correct. Yeah, the project that we, it was, it was, it went, it came through us, Martha, was that three years ago?
Yeah.
It's, and.
May of, may of twenty eighteen, I think it was finally approved.
Yeah, yeah. And so it's all built, it's all constructed, but it's not tied in. I think I might have talked about this on our last meeting, and, uh, this is the final thing they need to tie in. National Grid requires them to have their own access road, so they have to now create an access road uh, through the applicant's, uh, property, which has a lot of things going on with conservation. So more to be, uh, determined with that conversation.
Very good. Thank you. And, uh, MVPC, Martha?
Um, I really have nothing to report on that. The commissioners are, will not be meeting again until September. Uh, they did have a community economic development strategy kickoff meeting last week, which unfortunately I was not able to attend. But, uh, I think that's it.
Okay. Um, can we turn then to the planning directors' report?
Uh, sure. Uh, so as a few things, one, um, sort of referring to what Pete was just talking about on the Borrego Project. Um, we were actually, I was expecting that we would have a special permit modification decision submitted tonight um, for that, for that access road, um, because it will require both a, a public hearing for the special permit modification. It's not a minor modification. Um, also requires, um, modification to the conservation restriction, and that's before the, the state right now. Um, so the reason that didn't come before us is because Borrego has just sold its development business. So the applicant will now be a company called New Leaf Energy, and, um, Robert Zane was not able to kind of get all of that in order um, for tonight's meeting. Uh, we're also expecting a couple of A and Rs, which were going to be submitted tonight, but need more work, so they may be on the agenda for next time. Um. Uh, I had sent out a notice about the extension of the remote meeting, uh, uh, allowance from the state. So we're now allowed to, um, continue remeeting, meeting remotely, um, in accordance with chapter one oh-seven of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two until March thirty-first of next year.
Does that mean that we could meet in person now and we can choose to meet, uh, via Zoom?
Um, yeah. Yeah, so I think it's, it's really up to the board. Um, when the board discussed it last time, I think everybody was in, in agreement that Zoom seemed to be a good format to continue in. Um, but, and if the board wants to continue doing that, it can do so until March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three.
Right.
Yeah, I, um, um, I don't know if any, I, I just give anyone an opportunity if you want to speak to that. Oh, Martha, um, I think I, the legislature was, legislature was discussing, uh, the, um, uh, mandating at some point in the future, uh, uh, combination meetings, um. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm losing the term.
Hybrid meetings.
Hybrid meetings, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, did that go anywhere? I, I, my impression is it did not.
Um, my impression also is that it did not. The House passed that. It was amendment from the floor to mandate that all municipal meetings offer both hybrid and in-person, um, which, uh, the Mass Municipal Association was very concerned about because that basically becomes an unfounded mandate. You need the, the staff and the technology to do that. If you've got, you know, two meetings happening at the same time, and they're both, you know, have hybrid, you need to have staff who can handle, you know, handle both. So I think that was not passed. I don't know whether that's still open for discussion or whether it's just basically, um, you know, been, been squashed.
No, we'll have to await events. Well, a- as much as I would, as a pure personal preference, I, I would prefer meeting in person, but I, I have become convinced over the last couple of years that, that the Zoom, uh, that the advantages to the Zoom meeting, uh, specifically public participation and the ability to share information, um, it, it outweighs my personal preference. Uh, and that, so I'm inclined to continue on as long as we're able, uh, with the Zoom format, but, uh, I just wanted to give, if anyone has any other thoughts on that, I just want to give you the opportunity to weigh in. Everybody happy with the way we're doing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Leslie, do you want to say something?
Yeah, if I may, um, from my understanding, the report that, uh, Chair Greco gave at the select board meeting said, um, it's basically under consideration, but she feels that the hybrid won't go forward because it would be too costly to the smaller communities.
Right.
Good, thank you. Okay, um, Martha, was there anything else in your report?
Um, yes, a couple of things. Um, one, uh, the, we have received a, a special permit public hearing notice, um, from Damon Jespersen. He's looking for a special permit from, it's not for us, but for, from, uh, the select board for use of the barn at One Marsh Meadow for events such as weddings or, um, art shows and things like that. So that is going to be on August twenty-third, um, at seven fifteen. And that's, um, you know, mentioning this for two reasons, one, for information purposes, but this also, um, you know, was part of the Marsh Meadow OSRD subdivision, um, that, uh, was approved by the board a number of years ago. And, um, you know, the, the barn has been rebuilt. Some of you may remember that discussion, um, quite nicely, so. Um, so that's, uh, a notice that we came in, that came into us. Um, and the only other thing is, is Green Street, the sixty-eight Green Street project, um, they will probably be coming in at the next meeting to ask for permission to start construction on, uh, lots one and two. Uh, all the electrical, all the infrastructure work for the electrical has been done. National Grid just needs to come in and actually turn on the electricity. And that may be happening in the next week or two. So that's just kind of a preview of things to come.
And so you anticipate that for the eighteenth?
Yes, yeah, yeah, or the seventeenth, actually, I think.
Wow. Our next meeting.
Our next meeting, right, right.
Thank you. Um, anything else?
Uh, no, that's, oh, and just a reminder that our, our, um, master plan consultant Emily Ennis is also going to be joining us that, uh, that night to begin, to give us an update on, on progress with the master plan.
Good, great. Thank you. Okay, uh, shall we move on to the minutes? Uh, has everyone, um, had an opportunity to review the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any, uh, any discussion? Uh, Pete, any discussion on the minutes?
Just, I am, I'm, I, I was reminded of our, our detailed minute taking, and, uh, I want to thank Emily for doing that and Martha for overseeing that, and, uh, I'm glad that we, we've moved to a new format. And they were, they were detailed and they were good. So thanks a bunch.
And George, do you have anything?
Uh, I'm happy we're not using the every word format now. I'll pick you later.
Uh, Leslie?
I have nothing.
And, anything?
Uh, just, I agree with everything that was just, uh.
Okay, Mary?
I just, uh, want to say I'm really grateful for all the hard work. It's, it's.
It is, a lot of work, man, to that.
Sorry, but I'm just like, wow, I don't believe, you know, so that.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So move, sir.
Thank you, Pete.
Second.
Thank you, George. Um, uh, okay, on the motion, uh, Pete, how do you vote?
Uh, yes, sir.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And, um, I vote yes, and Mary, your, your thoughts?
Yes.
All right, so the meeting minutes are, are adopted, are approved, excuse me. And has everyone had an opportunity to review the April 6th, 2022 meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay, Pete, any, any comments, discussion?
I'm comfortable with it. Thank you.
George?
No.
Leslie?
I'm good.
Woody?
I'm good too.
And Mary? Okay, I, I do have one minor item. Well, it's not minor because it involves George, but and the, the motion to adjourn. I, I had to, I had to wrestle with myself whether I should even bring this up. Mentioned George, George's vote, it was not was not recorded. And I know he was there. And I know he voted yes. So I would, just with that amendment, I'm, I'm comfortable with the meeting minutes as drafted.
I think there was also one other under the select board report from Leslie, it should have said, meeting, the meeting.
Oh, that's right. Yes. Yeah, I'm reading from a liaison reports. L Matthews reported that it's March 22, 20, 22, 2022, the select board approved or reviewed. So the board meeting, I think, should be, should be inserted to include that and complete that sentence. Thank you, Martha. All right. That said, I'm not going to ask for further discussion. Oh, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve is amended.
Thank you, Woody. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Mary, your opinion?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So it's approved unanimously. And that concludes our business. Unless anyone has anything else. I just want to hang around.
I wondered, does, do the planning board the new business, does it ramp up, say in September, is there a cycle that town goes through in building more, more projects on, on the docket or?
Well, things
Continue.
Things have been fairly quiet the last couple of months, although it sounds like our next meeting maybe feel pretty full. Martha, do you want to comment on any of that? What do you see coming down the pike?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's difficult. As, as we know, we got blasted in 2020, 2020 and 2021, and that was very unusual. It tends not to be seasonal. It depends on a lot of other factors. You know, economics or people holding on to land that all of a sudden they're ready to do something with. So unfortunately, it's not very predictable. I do know that we've got some things coming down the pike. You know, this subdivision that we saw tonight. The subdivision that was discussed with us a few weeks ago, 170 Orchard Street and one that TJ has also been working on. So that's probably three, three subdivision applications that we're going to be having before us pretty soon. Then we've got the special permit modification for Borrego. So, you know, with luck, we will not end up having four public hearings going on at the same time, but it's, you know, it's possible.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's so difficult to predict.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good to know. Was on the bar, case it does ramp up again. Man, we get slammed.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what we went through in 2020, 2020 and 2021 was extraordinary. Never, never had a situation like that before. In each of those two years, we had $20,000 worth of application fees. And that's, you know, that's, that's unheard of for, for us, basically.
Yeah, that's many time multiple of the usual, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So like I said, I think the only time we may have rivaled that was possibly when the board was reviewing the village at Little River, but I'm not sure. That was before my time. So so I guess, I guess we'll, we'll see, but we certainly know that things are, things are, are brewing.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Woody, what was that?
I was just going to say that things that are coming up and hopefully we didn't just check ourselves.
Yeah, enjoy the quiet while you can.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, are we ready to, well, I can't say go home because we're all home, but
I'm not.
Are we ready to let Martha go home?
Yes. I would say yes, and I would love to make a motion on the adjourn tonight, Larry.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
I'd like to say that.
Thank you, Leslie. I'm not going to ask for any discussion. Well, if anyone has any, anything they'd like to say, please do. But otherwise, Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes, sir.
And George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Leslie on the motion?
Yes.
And Woody on the motion?
Yes, and have a good night, everyone.
You guys, yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes.
Stay cool tomorrow.
Yeah, everybody be careful. Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Larry. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt.